Sarah and Karen, can you hear us okay?
I can hear.
Yes, I can hear.
Karen, we can't hear you.
Um, I'm on mute.
I can hear Karen.
Okay, let's try it again. Testing one, two.
We can hear you Karen now.
Thank you.
Can you also see the screen?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Ready? Now that we've done the sound check.
Call the meeting in order, have roll call please.
Joe Meyer.
Here.
Eastling.
Here.
Link Hammer.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Bryce.
Here.
Okay, we'll start with citizens input, anyone to address the council?
Hello, I was gonna say, he decided to sit, but we're Kevin and Kathy Canfield, um, formerly of twenty-four seventy-three Radford Road. We have enjoyed thirty-five years of living in Asbury, but we cannot live in a city that does not respect its citizens' values or opinions. So we have moved, the city of Asbury wins. This last year has been filled with stress, anxiety, depression, disappointment, and trying to fight for our privacy, security, and the value of our property. We have learned a lot about government, more than what we wanted to know. The main lesson we have learned, that you can't win against city council. We would like to thank Russ for looking out for us during this time, and Mayor Adams for reaching out to us and answering our questions when we had them. We hope the whole roundabout will not impact our property value as we try to sell it. I guess we will see what the future brings. Well, good news for the city council, you'll not have to worry about seeing us anymore at the meetings, or on Zoom. Best of luck with the new roundabout, hope it works as planned. As we were telling our neighbors about our decision, they appreciated all our hard work we had put into the roundabout project, and said that we would be missed, including our Harley display at Christmas. We have been great neighbors in our neighborhood. Thanks.
Anyone else? On Zoom Beth?
Um, Sarah and Karen and you are the only ones on Zoom.
Alright, I didn't get a chance, but thank you. Alright, we'll move on to consent agenda, if I have a motion, or anything held for separate discussion.
No move.
All roll.
Bryce.
Aye.
Joe Meyer.
Aye.
Eastling.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Link Hammer.
Aye.
Has approved five zero, we'll move into the public hearing. This is for rezoning, rezoning request for twenty-five sixty-five Hills Mill Road from R two to C one. Have a motion to open the public hearing, do you hear parties for or against proposed amendment?
No move.
Second.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Trusting, sorry Karen, forget about the delay. Uh, anyone to address the council on public hearing?
You want me to read my statement in?
Let's close the public hearing.
Okay.
Have a motion to close public hearing?
So vote.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt ordinance eleven twenty-two-four, in order to amending zoning ordinance number four twenty-two-four for the city of Asbury, Beth please.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I just, I'm talking with Dale, um, he's been pretty forthright in, you know, what he wants to do with, you know, his plans, and the more, you know, he talked about his plans, the more I looked at his plans, I began to have, um, you know, think, just began to think more about, is C one the right zoning? And really should this be, um, C two? Especially when, um, Dale talks about potentially having, you know, a business that may be a drive-through, whether it be a bank, whether it be, you know, a restaurant, um, to have any kind of a drive-through, you have to have a, um, C two designation. I think to give Dale the best flexibility, um, for the type of, um, development that he's doing, I think C two is a more correct designation, um, than C one. The questions that you may have is, um, did Dale change his plans? No, Dale has done nothing different. Um, this is me just analyzing the problem, or analyzing, you know, what is proposed, and trying to do what's best for the long-term interest of the project. Um, two, um, this, we did have a public hearing, um, actually there's less people here at the public hearing for the council than was at planning and zoning, we had probably about fifteen people at the planning and zoning public hearing, so they must have all had their, um, questions answered, but at the public hearing that was held with planning and zoning, questions weren't about, do, is this, you know, the commercial or the use of the built, of the property? It was more on the lines of, people were concerned about stormwater, people were concerned about traffic, and regardless if it's C one or C two, um, those are the kinds of issues that will be taken under consideration as we move forward into a more detailed, um, site plan. Um, the second thing is, you know, planning and zoning did make the recommendation to do C one, however, council still has the ability on any planning and zoning recommendation, um, to, um, make a different recommendation than what planning and zoning had. I have, um, talked this over with the city attorney because I don't want, you know, things to have to be backed up. Um, if you don't want to do this, um, there is potential in the future that Dale's gonna have to come back anyways and get the C two designation, so I'd rather, I think it'd be more beneficial for all parties to just move forward, um, with the C two. Um, both of it means that it's commercial, which means there's office, retail, and commercial-type development that, you know, can go in there. Um, with any ordinance, this is an ordinance amendment, it takes, you know, you can pass it in, um, one reading, or you can pass it in three readings. Um, you also have the option tonight, if you want a table for, you know, further discussion, and, um, not make, you know, a decision. So, I'll leave it for council for questions for me.
And if you wanted to send it back to P and Z, we reset everything, it could, with, with the, with the lead times, the notifications, we're probably setting ourselves back six to eight weeks?
Yeah, it will be December before this comes back to council.
Um, one of, one of the questions I had, I asked you this Beth, but I think it'd be good for, um, everybody else to know, one of the things at P and Z was, the approval was gonna be contingent upon the sale, and otherwise it would revert back to, and can you just confirm that it has been, the sale has gone through then?
Dale is here in the room, and he purchased it, what, last Monday?
Okay, so that, that's a no, that's a non-issue then, that thing, that's just want people to know that.
Beth, have you talked to, or can you talk to anybody on planning and zoning and see what their feelings are?
Planning and zoning's may, main objective here is to get a commercial development that creates a synergy for the, uh, for the, for the city of Asbury, and, you know, maybe makes more of a center, creates a city center for the, uh, community. I mean, whether it be C one or C two is not, you know, they didn't have any, you know, strong feelings one way or another. This has been more on my recommendation.
I did let Mr. Winter know that, as a council, you probably would not approve this on the first reading, so there would be at least a second, if not a third, just that's the right thing to do probably. So, from my mind, to answer Karen's question, I mean, we can remind P and Z that this recommendation has come from staff, and they could not necessarily need to meet as a, as a, as a board, but they could address the council ahead of time, or to one, either meeting to meeting after, so you can get a feeling from the P and Z before you do the final, assuming you're not going to do it that tonight. Like, or any citizen for that matter.
Right.
I mean, if you would like, we could, how many letters we had to mail out by law on this, three or four? What was our notification right there?
I think it was like ten.
So, we could, we could do that mailing, just do a friendly reminder to the ten property owners that we had to notify legally, we say, look, you know, it's come back to council, it's looking at C two. Just, again, the interest of transparency. So if you wanted to approve C two, you're not committed to anything, obviously, with two more meetings if you so desire.
I, I think, I, I kinda like that idea, at least to give them a chance to, because there's a lot of different things that are, that you can do in C two that you can't do in C one, and if we just bring it back at least a second time, um, then, then if they have some issues, at least they'd give a chance, and that would only give us, that would only add two weeks to the, to the list.
Yeah, we'll definitely reach out to those ten property owners, we'll let P and Z know, and then we'll do our usual, whatever we can do to notify residents of agenda items.
So, so the, uh, the motion that we have in the packet is for C two, but the agenda topic says C one, so we're...
That's the way the original, um, paperwork was filed, but the motion we'd be looking for council to make is to rezone from, um, R two to C two.
I had the same question, and to, because that's the way, we had to stay that way, but you can always, and you will change that.
Yep, a question then, if, if, if we're gonna wait on this, we're gonna table this anyway, correct?
No.
No.
You're gonna vote on the first reading?
Oh, okay.
You got, you got three readings.
No, 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 that, that, that's what I...
You could table, I don't want to say you can't, but you can do the first reading and still have two opportunities.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay. Was there a motion on?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, ordinance eleven of twenty-two-four, amending zoning ordinance, um, from R, whatever it was, to C two.
R two.
R two to C two.
Yeah, sounds like, uh...
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, other discussion on the rezoning from R two to C two? All roll please.
Bryce.
Aye.
Joe Meyer.
Aye.
Eastling.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Link Hammer.
Aye.
That's approved five zero.
You.
Well, okay, and I, there's, won't be a motion to waive statutory.
Yeah, I'd like to bring it back.
Yep, no doubt, okay. Then I'll move on to new business, first item is reappearance of our board, two members asking for reappearance.
So there's Jared Floor and Steve Winger.
I'll make a motion to reappoint, and Steve.
Second.
Motion's second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Alright, reappointed, first item, F that is Resolution one forty-five twenty-two-four, resolution approving pay app number eight for the Autumn Drive Reconstruction Project.
Yeah, I guess, um, uh, kind of a big update is paving has been completed. Um, a lot of the intersection, concrete tie-in work has been completed as well, uh, and the contractor's flatwork crew has actually started doing some driveway work as well this week. Um, so the concrete is going down really quick. Um, they had another crew arrive on site to start, um, bringing the catch basins, the castings, get those installed, and bring everything to grade there, and get those finished up. Uh, some of the light poles are up, but they're not powered on yet, uh, that'll probably be a little bit later on here. Uh, and then, they have another crew doing a lot of black dirt placement, and kind of minor grading, that'll have to get fine-tuned, uh, once all the concrete work is complete. And then, uh, they have, they've had another crew on site, just kind of helping stay ahead of the concrete crew with, um, excavating driveways out and getting things prepared for them to pour. So they are working hard on site. Um, I, I see things wrapping up here within a couple of weeks, probably for the most part. Uh, so we're, we're pretty close to being done. Uh, with that being said, uh, this pay request is primarily for, um, some excavation, sub-base placement, uh, the drain tile installation, and, uh, all of the concrete paving. Uh, so it's a fairly substantial, uh, request, in the amount of five hundred eighteen thousand nine hundred and ten dollars and ninety cents. Unless you have any questions, MSA recommends approval of this pay request.
Nate, I just have one question, um, the, you said it'd probably be done in a couple of weeks. Will the street be open as, that's the alternate route for the Halloween parade, for traffic, so...
Yeah, we'll have things to the point for the Halloween parade, that if people need to use that route, that...
Thank you.
We'll make that work.
Perfect.
You have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution one forty-five twenty-two-four, or approve pay application number eight, the amount of five hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and ten dollars and ninety cents.
Second.
More second, any other discussion? All roll.
Bryce.
Aye.
Joe Meyer.
Aye.
Eastling.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Link Hammer.
Aye.
That's approved five zero. Resolution one forty-six twenty-two-four, a resolution approving change order number one for the Forest Hills Wetland Improvement Project.
Yeah, um, so this project's pretty well wrapped up, we're just waiting for the, uh, touch-up seating to come in and close this project out, likely at, uh, either the next council meeting or the first one in November. Um, this change order is just to catch up on a few items that were decided on during construction, uh, that were kind of on the spot, needed to know, um, and, and get done. Uh, so it adds up to, um, a bit over nine thousand dollars, but each item was roughly two to four thousand, uh, give or take. Um, one of the items was for special, uh, stormwater manhole inlet, uh, connected to a few drain tiles that we found during construction, and just was going to help drainage of the pond area. Uh, another item was for the reseeding that was done. Uh, we had the contractor install, uh, a wood excelsior blanket with the seeding, just to help hold the things in place a bit better, so we don't have to deal with erosion again. Uh, and then, um, the biggest item in there was, once we got, um, there's that forty-eight inch pulvert that runs under the access lane to the treatment plant. Uh, when things were cleaned up on site, we actually could look into that, the, both ends of that, um, pulvert a bit better. The pipe sections on the end were separated, and so, um, Blaine and I decided that now was the perfect time to fix that and add some steel tie bars to the pipe section, so we don't see that separation in the future. Um, so with that said, those three separate items added up to nine thousand six hundred sixty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents. I will also mention, um, looking at the items now, unless something else were to pop up, I foresee the final quantity balance resulting in, uh, a negative of probably around four thousand dollars or so, give or take, so it'll kind of balance out somewhat on the back end too. Unless you have questions, MSA recommends approval of these items.
Nate, I just have one other question, given the fact that we're not getting any rain and we're doing seeding, um, is it legal to pump water out of that pond to, 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 for the seeding?
The problem is, is it's, it's functioning as basically a dry pond, so it's...
There's no water in it, okay, now that, that answers my question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. Where's the motion? Which one?
One forty-six.
One forty-six of twenty-two-four, for the change order.
Second.
The second discussion? Call roll.
Bryce.
Aye.
Joe Meyer.
Aye.
Eastling.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Link Hammer.
Aye.
That's approved, next is Resolution one forty-seven twenty-two-four, resolution approving pay app number six for the Forest Hills Wetland Improvements Project.
Yep, so after everything I mentioned before, uh, pay request six is primarily just for some of that restoration work that was done, along with the change order items. Uh, with that being said, the amount was at twenty-three thousand ninety-two dollars and fourteen cents. Unless you have any questions, we recommend approval of pay request number six.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution one forty-seven of twenty-two-four, a resolution approving pay app number six for the Forest Hills Wetland Improvement Project.
I'll second it.
Motion's a second discussion? All roll.
Bryce.
Aye.
Joe Meyer.
Aye.
Eastling.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Link Hammer.
Aye.
Approved five zero, Resolution one forty-eight twenty-two-four, resolution approving pay app number two for the demolition project.
Yeah, the demolition project, um, if you've been up there, is, uh, pretty much substantially complete. Um, what needs to be done is still some rework of the ground and some roots and stuff, uh, um, unfinished type work that'd be done. Um, this is a recommendation to, um, pay, pay request number two in the amount of twelve thousand nine seventy, and then we'll still hone retention, to finish the rest of the work that needs to be done.
Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution one forty-eight of twenty-two-four, a resolution approving pay application number two for the demolition project.
Second.
Discussion? All roll.
Bryce.
Aye.
Joe Meyer.
Aye.
Eastling.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Link Hammer.
Aye.
That's approved five zero, and you have Resolution one forty-nine twenty-two-four, resolution approving pay up number three, the Meadows Kart Path Replacement Project.
Yep, so, uh, last week, Valentine Construction actually wrapped up the construction, or not construction, the concrete work for the project, um, basically completing construction. Uh, the restoration has been mostly completed, I don't, I think they still have that access lane two fixed up yet off of Hidden Meadows, but they're, they're getting close to having things wrapped up. Um, I, I think as far as the paths and everything go, I, I suppose it'd be pretty much ready to open once Greg is ready to, correct? So... Yeah, so I, I think we'll probably be ready to wrap things up, probably at the first meeting in November with closeout, so we're on track there. Um, with that being said, the pay request number three comes to the amount of a hundred and sixty-four thousand seven dollars and seventy-six cents. That's primarily for the cart path removals and replacements, uh, restoration, and then, uh, some minor erosion control items. Um, unless you have any questions regarding this pay request, we recommend approval.
Make a motion to, uh, approve Resolution one forty-nine of twenty-two-four, for pay app number three for the Meadows Kart Path Project.
I'll second.
More's a second discussion?
Yeah, just one thing, the, the, the cart paths are looking great out there. Uh, as you know, I played last Friday, and everything's looking good, and I'm really glad to get this behind it. Really glad.
Alright, anything else? Call roll.
Bryce.
Aye.
Joe Meyer.
Aye.
Eastling.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Link Hammer.
Aye.
The final item is Resolution one fifty, a resolution proving FY twenty-four annual urban renewal report.
In general, I tried to have this report ready at the same time that we did all the other reports, um, back in the first part of, um, September. Unfortunately, uh, state of Iowa did not have this report online for people to fill out at that time, so I've now completed the annual urban renewal port, report. Um, what this report does is it summarizes, um, the sources and uses of our funds that we, we use for our TIP. Um, upon approval by city council, we will, I will submit this report in the morning.
I think there's a motion to approve one fifty twenty-two-four.
So move.
Second.
Any final discussion? All roll.
Bryce.
Aye.
Joe Meyer.
Aye.
Eastling.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Link Hammer.
Aye.
That's approved five zero, we'll take citizens input, I think that previously discussed. Alright, you have quarterly financial, PD, GM report, park board, if any library district reports? Any comments or motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the reports.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Except the five zero, Karen, you want to go first please?
I pass.
Russ?
Um, I've, I took a walk down Autumn and it looks really good, so that's all I have to say.
Great. Ditto on that with the Autumn, I spoke to some of the neighbors and they're very excited to complete it and get back in the driveway. I don't have anything, Beth, any?
I just want to bring council's attention to a piece of, um, legal work that was... I just want to bring council's attention to a piece of, um, legal work that was submitted um, regarding the property owners for Hales Mill Road that are challenging the special assessments, and they're requesting to add petitioners, um, to this, the suit, as well as to requested that their payments that are due in October be, uh, waived or held. And this, um, document, the court has ruled that they can't add anybody else, and the city does not have the ability to, um, waive the, the first installment.
All right, nothing else, I would, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
New meeting adjourned.